Okay, we're going to start it. Thanks, everybody. It's great to see that we've got Dan Hollins here. This is nice. This is our workshop meeting. Our monthly workshop meeting has been changed to come here and we want to thank Dr. Kraft and his staff for an excellent evening so far. We came here earlier. We were treated to a meal by culinary arts department. It was fantastic. I think everybody was very satisfied. We even had a vegetarian option for the vegetarian supporters. And then we were treated as well to a tour of the facility. Unfortunately, we didn't get a chance to see the house.
We have pictures we can give you on a flash drive. If you have an opportunity to show it at some point, we can.
Yeah, we'd love to see it at some point. But again, Dr. Kraft, again, thank you very much for your hospitality.
Thank you, and just want to remind you that this is one of your school buildings. We're jointly owned by sixteen school districts. So you're actually sitting in one of your exeter buildings here, even though it's not on your property in your school district. And we do have, this is the 50th anniversary of our school, both east and west, and we're going to do a huge celebration activity, a couple of things throughout the year, but this particular campus will be open for a big open house on Saturday, April 27th, spring day first. And the house project, we'll have tours of the house. Our students will be in there. So please come back during the big open hours in April when the house is actually completed at that point and tour our campus, look at campus. Thank you. And you're very welcome. I'm glad you could have this evening and showcase the programs that your students are in. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks. So this evening, again, we'll start the workshop. We are, just sort of public comments if there are any members in the audience who would like to address the board on any topic either on the agenda or anything else applicable to the school district. Let me say none. We're going to move on to our building program reports this evening. We have student testing, and we've got Dr. Patrick Winters here this evening, our assistant superintendent, who will help us through some of the assessment.
Thank you, Dr. Dan Berger. As I go through the presentation, I'm going to be scrolling down through the assessment report that is also linked to the board agenda, which is online on Word docs. I think it's a very important place to start. When we talk about data, when we talk about assessment, is a vision from a district standpoint in terms of what we mean. And I think there's a very important distinction has to be made between when we say data-informed decision-making versus database decision-making. And this is something that I've been sharing with the board here recently, and those of you that have been in education for a number of years know that there was that time when all we heard was database decision-making. Everything you do has to be driven by data. And I've really changed, trying to change the narrative a little bit within the district and focusing more on things being data-informed. Education is and always will be a people business. We're not just, you know, producing widgets in a factory. And so, you know, data is a very important piece, and it's an important measuring stick, but it's part of the whole child education that we have in the district. So while I'm going to be sharing a lot of data this evening and be sharing a lot of numbers, in terms of working with the principals, in terms of working with the teachers, we really emphasize we want you to be data-informed, but not necessarily everything is database without any consideration for the whole child. We had a kind of a great first step in this direction yesterday during our in-service day for the teachers, where we were able to spend the entire morning looking at differentiation, best instructional practices as a way to set the groundwork for the afternoon, where teachers spent time working in grade levels and working on teams to look at their data to inform instruction, to build better assessments than embedded writing, to action plan around neat areas for students. And so that was really kind of step one for the teachers of a process that we're going to continue to work through throughout the year and moving forward. And it's really about being systemic and recognizing that we want this focus of being data-informed to be something that's happening at all six of our buildings. There's been great support from principals. There's been great support from teachers and recognizing that, you know, data is still in terms of the public opinion, in terms of how we're measured, you know, people are going to look at data and make determinations. And so it is something that we have to continually look at as part of our systemic planning. So as we get into the specific data for the district, I'm going to start with English Language Arts. And what you have on the chart here is five years of data. The top number in each box is 2014, working down to present, and we have every grade level three to eight over the last five years. There are a lot of specifics on this particular chart. I'm going to hit some highlights. I think one of the things that jumps out as a real positive is if you look at the last two columns that are in green, and you look at our proficiency scores in every grade level, and you look at the column beside it, we've been consistently higher than the state every year from 2014 on in terms of what state proficiency has been in ELA and where we were. Some years, it's been significantly higher, and other years, it's been smaller, but we've always been higher. So that consistency has been there. That's a plus. And when we kind of go grade level by grade level, just to point out a couple of things in each grade level. In grade three, our overall trend is slightly downward, but what's encouraging is our percentages of students advanced. You'll notice that from, you know, last year, from 1617 to 1718, that number went up. That's encouraging. When we look at grade five, for example, even though our overall percentages may be going somewhat downward, our number of proficient students from 1617 to 1718 went up. We had increases in advanced numbers in grade six, increases in proficient numbers in grade seven and grade eight when you look at 1617 to 1718. So while we can look at the whole chart and see some downward trends on a grade-to-grade basis, there are certain times, certain years where our proficiency numbers may have gone up, or our advanced numbers may have gone up, which is a good sign in those particular areas. To go into language ELA a little bit further, on this next page, this is cohort data. Now, there are a couple of different ways of looking at cohort data. This particular measure is not necessarily taking one graduating class and tracking it from third grade to graduation. This is looking at a group of students throughout their years of taking PSSAs. So if you look at the first one, grades three through seven, okay? So our third graders, okay, when they took the PSSAs in 2014, we had 80% proficiency. Those same students, when they took the ELA PSSA, as seventh graders just this past spring, had 70.8%. Now, one of the things that is important to keep in mind when you look at proficiency data for PSSA is that the test has undergone changes, okay? And, you know, we look, we think back to 2014, it was more of a content-based assessment. It focused more on eligible content. When the PA Core standards came into being, the assessment shifted. There was a larger focus on critical thinking skills, on some of the writing that's part of the text-dependent analysis. And, you know, there is a direct correlation when we look at our data in general, that our scores started to trend a little bit downward when the assessment became a little bit more difficult. But, you know, one example of the cohort data, as I said, is three to seven. Another one, just to kind of highlight a longer period of time, when we look at four to eight, you know, again, they were 81.5 in 2014, and then when they, as fourth graders, then as eighth graders, you can see where they were. However, you know, consistently, again, on this chart, as with the other one, still performing in most instances substantially better than the state collectively. And, you know, one of the disclaimers, I always feel it's important to note when you talk about data, is that data can be looked at through so many different lenses. And so, you know, I really encourage everyone, you know, this is a snapshot, but we can't look at this, you know, in isolation because there are many other different pieces that go along with it. Similarly, when we look at math, you know, the math data is organized in much the same way. When I look at things kind of big picture, yes, we do have downward trends in math as well, which is certainly a concern. I will get towards the end of the presentation about some of our next steps and where we're heading with that. But as we noted with ELA as well, there are some things within certain grade levels over the past five years that are encouraging. For example, if I scroll down to grade five, you know, when we look at grade five, we, our percentage went up. Now, you can argue 44% to 49%, 49% is still not, you know, fantastic, but a 5% increase overall from 1617 to 1718 is notable. Also, in grade five, our advanced numbers, you know, went up percentage-wise from the year before, almost 6%. So that's, you know, those things are positive. We saw similar increases in advanced numbers from the previous year to 1718 in grade six. And in grade eight, we saw some really good things in terms of 1617 to 1718. Overall proficiency went up, total percentage of students proficient, and then advanced, those numbers went up as well. So I always try to focus on, when I look at data, the things that are encouraging, the things that we can be positive and build upon while still recognizing that there are areas for growth. Once again, as with the ELA, we have some cohort data related to math as well. When we look at grades three through seven, for the most part, we've been fairly flat. That cohort's been fairly flat over the last three years. So as fifth graders, sixth graders, seventh graders, we've just been within a couple of percentage points of one another. And then in four through eight, we have somewhat of a downward trajectory, you know, as far as those numbers are concerned. So, and again, you know, I don't want to go every single individual cohort. I want to be, you know, mindful of trying to keep this big picture, but there are a whole lot more nuanced pieces that we could look into there. In addition to the PSSAs, I also want to take a few minutes and talk about student scores because our high school students are assessed as well. One of the things that is important distinction is that we have to keep in mind that the PSSA assessment and the Keystone exams are two very different kinds of assessments. The Keystone exam is an end-of-course assessment. So it's comparable to, you know, a final exam of sorts for students that are taking that particular course, Algebra I, English X, and/or Biology. Whereas the PSSA is more of a comprehensive grade level assessment that's looking at, you know, overall skills. So there are some very differences between the two assessments. Likewise, the numbers with Keystone, I didn't tease it out to where it shows first-time testers versus second-time or third-time testers. So this overall data has all of those folks, you know, grouped together, and we do have students, if they don't pass the Keystone the first time, they have to remediate and then take it again. But some general things that I will note about the Keystone scores is in Language Arts, we have seen an upward trend in Keystone scores over the last three years. So whereas, you know, 1718, 70% of our students were advanced or proficient compared to when we look at 1617, it was 59%, and when we look at 1516, it was 62%. So, you know, what that demonstrates to me is that our English literature teachers have recognized some of the areas that need to be touched on and are making some adjustments and working with the students. This was something that they also did yesterday as part of that in-service work, looking at areas where there was growth and figuring out how to treat assessments accordingly. In terms of Algebra I, we have a similar upward trajectory over three-year data. In 1718, we had 61% of our students proficient or advanced. 1617, it was 55. And in 1516, it was 49. So that's an overall 12% increase in proficiency over that three-year time period. And then Biology, the third Keystone-tested area, a little bit more flat, 71% in 1718. No, I'm sorry, that's wrong. I made that back. I didn't. Nope, 66. I apologize. Then 1617, we were also 66, and then 1516, 71. I had that backwards. I apologize. So relatively flat within Biology, but still solid. So gives you an idea of kind of big picture in terms of where we are with regards to the Biology Keystone. The other thing that I did for the benefit of the board members tonight, you found a packet when you sat down this evening. I wanted you to have a sample within the PSSA of what a math open-ended response question looks like and what a Language Arts text-dependent analysis question looks like, as well as how it's scored. These two examples are from grade five. And, you know, I think, you know, when you have some time to look at them, what will kind of strike you, as it did me, is just how much we're asking our students to be able to do, even at that grade level, both in math and in Language Arts. And if you look at the rubric for the TDA, which is also in that packet, and you look at an advanced score and the kinds of writing that is expected, that's pretty intense. That's a pretty high bar. And so that's why we really focus our work in literacy around the text-dependent analysis component and really helping students become very comfortable writing those responses, both in English and in other content areas. So it's not homework. Jerry asked me if that was homework you guys could go home and do. No, you don't have to do that as homework, but, you know, it was something that I wanted you guys to have. This is a reference point to have a sense of just how demanding, you know, what we're asking our students to do. The other piece that I wanted to share just very quickly is I included with this document that's up here, a profile document for the high school, for all of the board members. I cannot take credit for this document. Andrea Fries and our school counseling office at the senior high put this document together. But I wanted to highlight a few things on it because there have been some questions around AP scores, some of those kinds of things. And in the interest of time, I'll just work for my copy, but just some things to point out. Class of 2018, the average SAT score was 1,082, 549 in reading, 533 in math. That's another valuable data point that we maybe often don't look at. In terms of AP exams, 72% of our students that took an AP exam got a three or better. You know, when you look at last year's class of 2018, and 20% of those students got a five. And so at many universities, a three or better will enable you to get college credit for that particular course. So that's a real significant accomplishment and testament to our teachers. In terms of the National Merit Scholarship Program, which is based on PSAT scores, in 2018, we had a one semifinalist and two commendations. That's a very significant accomplishment for our students. That's a very competitive scholarship that's out there. And in terms of post-high school plans, class of 2018, 57% of our students went to four-year colleges, 14% to two-year colleges, 2% to trade and technical schools, 10% to the military. Better 9% was undecided. So, you know, I think, you know, when we talk about data and we talk about, you know, all the different aspects of data, we can't just look at PSSA or just look at Keystone. There's other really valuable data like the AP, the SAT, National Merit, that's important to pay attention to because it does paint a picture of the good work that's happening in the district. I'd just like to wrap up before we get into questions with some close, grows, and next steps because I'm a big proponent of, okay, you know, we have this data, so what does it mean? What's next? There are some things that we definitely can celebrate. This past year, in grade six, 76% of our students were advanced or proficient. That's getting very close to 80%, which is outstanding. Grades three through six, that cohort, they've had four consecutive years of scores at 70% or better. So we're seeing a positive trend with that cohort. In math, overall grade five scores improved by 5% from 1718. That grade three through seven cohort, percentage of students advanced, 6% increase. Those are pluses. Keystone, as I said, LIT scores improved 11% over a two-year period, Algebra I, 12% over a three-year period. And I think this is very significant in terms of Biology, that over that three-year period, 30% plus of our students were advanced yearly, 1516, 1617, 1718 on that Biology Keystone exam. So, you know, there's been nice consistency in students performing, you know, very, very well. There are areas to grow. It is a concern that in Language Arts, our scores are on a downward trend in all grade levels except sixth grade. That's concerning when you look at three to eight. In math, the highest math score in terms of percent advanced proficient in 2018 was only 51%, and that's in grade three, where math is really the most basic out of all the grade levels. That's concerning. Keystone, I'm a big believer in this idea of a multi-tiered system of supports. State used to call it RTI, Response to Intervention Instruction, but, you know, which is something we support and follow in the district. And that model tells us that 80% is your core instruction. That's your first tier. That's what everybody receive, you know, is receiving. And so I believe 80% or better of students should be proficient in course content and concepts. And so when we think about the Keystone as an end-of-course assessment, you know, we're still not at 80% or better of students taking these exams at a level of proficiency. That's a goal, something to aspire. So when we look at next steps, things that we're doing or will continue to do, focusing on the text-dependent analysis matrix in grades three through eight for ELA proficiency on that concept within the PSSA. It's the gatekeeper for success on that ELA PSSA. The highest percentage of the score is based on that TDA prompt. And so, you know, the work that Julie Klein has done with the team of teachers and principals to build that matrix out is being very instrumental and hopefully helping us improve those scores. Emphasis on math alignment, K to 12, where the use of standards guides our instruction and curriculum design. We had some great work happen over the summer, K to six. We're starting work seven to eight during this school year to improve that alignment to close some of those achievement gaps. What I call the golden triangle, curriculum, instruction, and assessment, making sure all those things are working together. More addressing the curriculum, we're addressing the instruction through in-service, we're addressing the assessment with the addition of the STAR assessments, and some of the things we're doing in classrooms. Reading and writing in the content areas to support literacy, getting our students in science and social studies classes to read more, to write more. And the examination of the Algebra I structure to increase Algebra I success for all students at the high school level. It's a gatekeeper. When you go back and look at research, you can look at and see how students did in Algebra I, and it's a huge determinant in terms of their success into college and beyond. So we want to look at that structure. So that's very much a snapshot of the district data. I could go much more in-depth, but I just wanted to kind of give the umbrella overarching picture for this evening, but I'd certainly welcome any questions or thoughts individuals have.
You're welcome. If you want to say anything, I'll say something.
Sure.
First, thank you for the presentation. I found it very interesting, and I appreciated when we had our session a couple Saturdays ago, when you explained data-informed versus database. I think that sort of clarified for us that we weren't just sort of teaching necessarily to a test, and we certainly weren't ignoring the other aspects of being human. We weren't sort of looking at this as artificial intelligence and putting a robot up in front of the room and thinking that that's how we're going to teach our kids. So I appreciate that. When you, a couple of, just a few things, you mentioned some areas of growth, which I think you pointed out to us here. And, you know, as a school board, our job is to help. So, you know, what are, what are some of the things, I mean, this is just a discussion. It's not locking us into any commitment or any example. What are the things that the school board can do to assist in trying to address some of these next steps or district grows? I mean, what are some of those, some of those things? I know I'm sort of putting you on the spot, but that's our job. Our job, I mean, our job is to have our kids perform academically so that they're in the best position for wherever they're going to go.
Yeah, you know, I think, you know, a couple of things come to mind for me. I think, you know, one of the things is in terms of professional development, making sure that we can get our teachers the best PD possible so that they can be as effective as they possibly can be. So that, you know, if there, if there are conferences or, you know, PD opportunities that come up for teachers that I put on the board agenda, even if they may end up being a little bit more expensive because of the nature of the training, or where it may be, you know, just an openness and a willingness to consider that because of recognizing that it, you know, could really benefit, you know, those teachers that we're sending. That's, that's one thing that comes to mind for me. You know, another thing is, you know, looking at, you know, resources as we, you know, maybe phase out, you know, one textbook series that as we look to phase another textbook series that may have digital components, may have some other pieces, you know, while I'm going to do my very best to not make sure I come to the board with, I need new textbook series in, you know, all four subject areas in one year. You know, there is a cost, you know, with those, and, you know, the textbook companies are not making it, you know, less expensive on us by any means, but that, you know, when we, you know, similar kind of thing, you know, as those resources present themselves, you know, much as the board has done with the STAR assessments this past year with being able to purchase iXcel and DreamBox, just, you know, that continued openness to continue to, you know, have the money available to be able to purchase those resources if we need them. You know, those are two things that come to mind immediately. I think, you know, what I feel very, very excited about is that, you know, when I look at where we are, I, you know, I don't think this is one of these scenarios where, you know, adding additional staff will, you know, solve, you know, any sort of data issues. I believe we have the people in place to do it. I, you know, I believe that very strongly. I think it's just, you know, working on my end with the principals and the teachers to make sure that, you know, they have all the tools in their toolbox to be as successful as they can be. I'm a big proponent of professional development, and we're really trying to build capacity to let people learn from one another. And, you know, I wish you guys could have been at the in-service day yesterday. We had 13 classroom teachers that helped co-present yesterday morning, and it was fantastic. Seeing them present to their peers and learn from one another was so exciting. And so really, you know, I'm going to continue to look for ways to involve our teachers and get them, get them more opportunities, you know, that way. The only personnel piece that we've, you know, discussed at all related to curriculum and assessment is the possibility of a math coach. You know, we have had discussions, Rose and I have had discussions, Dr. Phillips and I have had discussions. So, you know, that, that may very well be, be something that we, you know, include in, you know, come budget time, but you know, the personnel is the only position wise that I can think of that we would be, you know, coming with. But thank you for the question, Mike. I appreciate that.
Thanks for the presentation. I think that's our job is to hear from you guys as transparently as we can, and our job is to figure out, you know, how we think it works. Thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah?
Go ahead, Joe.
Two questions. Do you think that the teachers' adoption or the administrators' adoption of standardized testing, specifically in Keystone with the PSSAs, their adoption of that is something that's even useful at all, contributes to the scores at all, and are we seeing problems, benefits from that? Is what I'm saying making sense?
Do you mean in terms of?
Do you think it's like useful, like I adopt this as something that's worthwhile?
Yeah, you know, it's a, you know, it's, that's a really interesting question because I think that, you know, anytime, you know, the state, you know, comes up with a new assessment that they're putting out there, I think the first concern from teachers is always, you know, how much is this going to take away from my autonomy to be the individual teacher that I am and to do what I know I can do best?
Yeah.
And I think, you know, what, what we've tried to do is, you know, not focus on the assessment, but focus on the instruction. Because I've always been a big proponent that if you're instructing in a way that is meaningful and that, you know, has high learning expectations and really gets kids thinking, the test is going to take care of itself. Because I believe good, good instruction is going to trump, you know, assessment any time. So I think, you know, those teachers that recognize that and are doing that, and we have many that are, have been able to kind of successfully marry the two, but it is always a challenge. always a challenge, you know, because, you know, you want to be able to use that creative expression in the classroom as a teacher. That's why many teachers go into the career to kind of be able to do those things. And, you know, assessments can, you know, cramp on that a little bit, but, you know, we continue to focus on the instruction.
So, leaning into that a little bit, and I think it's somewhat more on the horizon than maybe what we're looking at right now, but have we started to gear up for a district administer civics tests? Because I know that that's a new requirement that the state is laying down. Is that something that we're putting in place for next year, or when, when is that coming on the horizon?
I know at this point, it's, it won't be in place. No, that's fine. You know, it won't be, it, it, it won't be in place for this school year. You know, that, that I know for certain. You know, beyond that, we're, we're focusing heavily right now on science and social studies, five to eight. And so, a lot of that work will inform kind of what happens nine to twelve after that. I think I had shared with you one time in a conversation we had about the C3 framework around civics education, and we're using that to inform our work in social studies right now. And, you know, that's one of the areas where we're looking at figuring out what resources we need, so that'll be an item later in the year when we find the right resource for social studies that I'll be coming back to the board to ask to approve purchase for. It's definitely on the horizon. I think one of the things that's, that's unfortunate is, you know, there are so many natural connections of social studies within English and even within other content areas as well, but yet it seems to be like at the state level, I often joke and say it's like the wicked redhead stepchild, and everybody forgets about social studies. You know, we have assessments in every other subject area. That's unfortunate, because I think social studies has a lot of value for our students. And so, you know, yes, we're definitely going to focus on that, but as far as the immediate horizon, no, it's probably more kind of as we get to the end of this year, thinking into the following year and beyond.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Oh, questions? Specifically, I thought the presentation was very captivating. It was very enlightening. The first one I was looking at was the AP test. Right now, we're looking at one hundred and thirty-five students that were taking the test this past year. I was wondering, compared to the number of students who are actually taking AP courses, are we seeing this about eighty percent of the students that are deciding to take the exam? Or are we seeing fifty percent? Did you have a percent, but I guess a little towards high school?
Yeah. Jason, I was just on the spot. Do you have a sense there?
I can tell you that the number is high, I don't, in terms of a correlation of one thirty-five to how many students that we're taking. I can dig a little bit. I couldn't tell you exactly how many, but the vast majority of students that are taking the AP exams, or excuse me, that are taking the AP courses are taking the exam. As they become more confident in, in their capacity for the exam, you see those numbers continue to improve. So, when you see numbers like fours and fives on the exam, that's a great indicator that they're being well-prepared, and then you see larger percentages of students actually taking the exam. If you'd like an actual number of students enrolled versus students taking, I can certainly get that for you.
No, I just might make, make sure, was make sure that students were taking the class and then very hesitant about showing up to take the exam. And we're seeing that a large number of students are feeling confident enough to go to that next step. I think that's our goal, because we're preparing for that level. The next one I was looking at was the algebra and looking, I'm looking at the grades, and I know that the seventh, eighth grade as well as ninth grade were offering algebra. Are we seeing that proficiency level is dropping at, for the students who are taking in ninth grade, because they're not really ready for it, because they're just not as mathematically inclined, and that may be one of the hesitance, whether it downfalls or?
You know, it's a, it's a great question, and actually something that myself and Rose and Mr. Campbell and even the senior high math department were discussing yesterday, you know, with Rose in terms of, you know, what is contributing to that? Yes, you know, as it stands now, you know, our Algebra One scores in the junior high are, as far as on the Keystone, are strong, you know, they're high, because it, it is often our strongest math students coming into grade seven that are taking Algebra One in, after junior high. And then, you know, you get to high school, you've got the whole rest of the junior high that needs to take Algebra One. And there are some things that we need to look at from a scheduling standpoint. You know, when you look at how much is in Algebra One, and if you consider that it's a semester-long course on the, you know, on the, on the block, one semester, that's not a lot of time. So, we're, we're discussing, do we, you know, make it a full-year course, you know, on the block, maybe make it a two-credit course that students take? All those things are on the table, but there is a definite openness on the part of the math department at the senior high to look at Algebra One and what we can do to improve student success. Because it is, you know, like I said, as part of the presentation, there's a direct correlation between student success on Algebra One and success in future math classes, success when they get to college.
Building logic at that point.
It is. Yeah, it absolutely is.
Which requires then, looking at math program, and you noted that the third grade was really our highest performance, and we've now had our new math program in place probably for at least three or four years. Do you feel that math program is where we need to be? Do we need to tweak it anymore? Is it reasonable? Getting better results in the third grade right now? What, what kind of feedback or what kind of understanding are you getting from that?
So, you know, a lot of what I'm kind of gleaning relating to the math program has been somewhat anecdotal and somewhat what I'm hearing in, in talking with folks, but I think that, you know, when it was, you know, initially rolled out, the, the focus was heavy on fidelity. You know, we have to implement it, you know, the correct way on a day-to-day basis, and it was viewed more as a scripted, you know, program. And so, now we're transitioning our teachers into recognizing that CPM and investigations is, yes, it's a math program, but it's a resource. And so, now we need to take that resource, we need to align it to the standards, we need to make sure we're addressing gaps, which is all the work that Rose facilitated over the summer in grades K to six. So, you know, I, like, I've, I've often said that, you know, you have to get kind of the curriculum piece paired with the assessment piece correct, and then you can, you know, support teachers instructionally. And so, I think now that we've had those math programs, I think we're four or five years in, and now that we have people using them, you know, the way that, you know, they're intended to be used, and we're providing professional development on that, I'm optimistic and hoping that we're going to start to see a steady, you know, increase. You know, because if we don't address the instructional pieces, I don't think it matters if we get rid of CPM and put something else into place. I don't think that's going to cure, you know, the issue, because curriculum and program are not synonymous. They're not, they're not one and the same thing. You know, programs are a resource. Thank you. Yeah, no problem. Jerry?
This might be drilling down too far into numbers, but in looking at the math PSSAs, okay, what I try to do with this stuff is to put it in terms of what I've been understanding. So, I try to transfer from my business. So, I see, for instance, in grade four, we go one year, eighty-five down to fifty-four percent. In grade five, seventy-five to forty-five. If I've got a supplier who's delivering at eighty percent on time, okay, I want you at a hundred, but I'll take your eighty as long as it's not going to be too long for the other one. If that guy goes from eighty down to forty-five, I've got a major problem, because now he's in my pocket. So, but I can go into his place and sit and look at it and say, okay, well, you're, you're low on people, you're this, that, and the other thing, you're sloppily inefficient, whatever it may be. But how do we go from one year to the next level to create? And it's great that it's coming up, but how do you create it?
So, yeah, it's a great question. So, that, that significant dip from, you know, fourteen to the following year coincided with the change in the test. That coincided with when Pennsylvania adopted the PA Core standards, both for math and for language arts. The problem is that, you know, you can't, at least in my opinion, you know, as a state, you can't all of a sudden say to principals and teachers, we're going to completely change the standards and then not put the necessary supports in place to help them deal with those changes. So, so what happened was that when that, you know, came down the pipe, a lot of districts, you know, tried to solve it by, you know, buying a new program or, you know, hiring, you know, tons of different coaches, but there wasn't really an understanding in the standards and what they meant and what they were asking people to do. You know, what's been such a positive here is that, you know, we have, you know, two people in our curriculum and instruction department, in Julie and Rose, that have kind of embraced those standards and have a really strong understanding of it, so that when we bring teams together to look at curriculum, we're not just looking at the program, we're looking at the standards. And we're saying, you know, okay, fourth grade math, let's wrap our head around the standards. What do they mean? You know, how do we operationalize this, you know, in the classroom? And that was the part that was missing, that, you know, when the decision was made to change the test and make it more of a conceptual understanding-thinking person's test, you know, if you don't give teachers tools in the toolbox to teach kids how to be metacognitive and how to think about their thinking, which is a whole different skill set, it, you know, it's a huge challenge. And while I didn't, you know, put scores out there across the state, I think if we looked at scores across the state from those two-year period, you know, you, you would see something similar happen most everywhere.
So, the state stuck it to us?
Well, I mean, I don't want to say.
How much notice does it give us?
You know, I don't, I don't remember zones particulars. You know, I will say that I believe that the PA Core standards are good. I like what they test. I think they test the right things. My criticism was never with the change itself, it was with the supports or lack thereof that were put in place at the state level to help with the change. It wasn't a bad change. It was probably a necessary change, but, you know, you can't change without support. You know, I always say, high accountability, high support. You want to hold people accountable, you've got to give them the support they can be successful if you're going to hold them accountable. You can't hold people accountable and say, there you go, you know.
No, the state isn't that.
You know, so.
Can I pick up on that, Mike? So, what I heard you say, or what you implied, and I want to make sure I understand this right, is that the tests that are per-grade level right now, that we have right now, are not too hard for our students to be capable of doing. It's that our instruction isn't aligned with it yet, and we need to work on that to bring up our assessment.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I mean, the, the assessments are definitely challenging. You know, do I believe that our students can do them and be successful? I do. But it's going to require, you know, the right level of, you know, instructional support. You know, we have to, and I'll just use specialization as an example, that, you know, when you put the PA Core standards and the rigor of that curriculum, and you give it to a child who maybe is two grade levels behind mathematically, you know, that can't look the same for that child. You have to figure out additional ways to make that curriculum accessible. Saks and Math helps with that, which is something that we, you know, have put into place. Our multi-tiered system of supports helps with that. The STAR assessment is helping with that. So, I, I mean, yes, you know, they can do it. I mean, we, you know, we've got amazing kids here, I believe in our, in our students immensely, and I believe in our teachers as well. I think if we just give them the support that they need, yeah. I mean, I, you know, you know, do I think our score is going to be eighty percent or better? Absolutely. Yeah.
To pick up on your example, for students with, for a student with an IP who is below grade level, do you think that those cases are still fitting into that twenty percent that we, that we had mentioned earlier about how eighty percent should be scoring proficient in advance, and that's our general expectation? And then the other twenty percent need additional help to take the test again and spring or something along those lines?
So, in a perfect world, that's how a multi-tiered system of supports is supposed to work.
Okay.
You know, I mean, does it, you know, play out that way to those exact percentages here? You know, no, it doesn't. You know, we're probably, you know, higher than twenty percent, and it needs a, you know, deeper level of support, and we just have to make sure that we provide it.
So, I guess the reason I ask that is, is the eighty percent achievable with these standards? Just building off of the conversation I just, or that question that you were just answering, is eighty percent proficiency in advanced for eighty percent of students with these standards, is that attainable?
I believe it is, yes.
I just have two more questions, because I forgot to ask one. You just mentioned something. So, so how do you provide those deeper levels? Where does that come from? Is that? I don't even have a frame of question. I'll let it ask.
I, I think, I think it comes from in-service time. I think it comes from early dismissal time and the principals, you know, identifying needs in their buildings and, and working through that. You know, I'll use a lot in Crete as an example. Mr. Crete is here tonight. You know, he really is focusing this year on professional learning communities of teachers that are getting together and looking at data and talking about it and learning from one another. That's, that's a model that we've encouraged all of our principals to try to be using. That's just one example. It's happening in other buildings as well. So, I think that's one way to do it. You know, we certainly, in certain subject areas and certain grade levels, we have teachers that are meeting on their own time. They're just taking it upon themselves and, you know, getting together and learning and talking from one another. You know, we do it through training. While I've tried to limit curriculum work that happens during the year to over the summer, there are certain times where teachers need to be trained, and if we've got to pull them out of the classroom to make sure they have that training, then, you know, that's what we do. You know, we leverage the supports that we have. You know, I mean, we use our literacy coach, you know, significantly. You know, if it, if it works out and, you know, the board, you know, approves a math coach, that, I think, could be very useful for our teachers from a math standpoint, somebody that can get in the classroom and model lessons. I mean, Rose does some of that, but, you know, she's trying to look at things more systemically and looking at things, you know, more in terms of big picture. So, you know, there's, there's an opportunity there. I mean, obviously, if we had more time, I mean, that's, you know, all of us would love to have more time, but, you know, we are, we are limited there to some extent, but the training and PD and coaching is, is kind of the most bang for the buck.
Being back to big picture, and I know people probably want to move on, but beyond their own pride, you know, when people post these scores without any context or whatever, I mean, either your chest gets puffed out or you get depressed over the scores. And I think once you get the context, you sort of understand why they are the way they are.
Sure.
But are there any sort of real-world consequences for these scores? Do we lose funding? Do we gain funding? Does it affect teacher performance, you know, in a fair way, or are there consequences associated with that?
Where, yeah, it's a really good question. Where our scores are now, the answer is no. I mean, there, there are some districts in the state where, like, the scores get so low, where you fall into what's called school improvement, and, you know, the state can come in and, you know, mandate, you know, certain things be done, you know, that type of thing. We're not percentage-wise anywhere close to that, so, you know, it's not going to impact our funding in terms of the evaluation piece.
Well, I just wondered, I mean, you know, the results, you know, more funding?
Not, not at present. No, they don't. They don't. Other, other states have gone down that road. They have, you know, they have done, well, not, not funding, but they've done merit pieces for teachers. Pennsylvania has not, you know, gone down that road, other states have. But I guess the other piece too, that, that kind of, you know, weaves into that a little bit, is as far as the teacher evaluation component, the, the building-wide scores are, you know, a part of that percentage. It's fifty to twenty percent, but the largest percentage of a teacher's overall evaluation is their back-to-back evaluation. And so, where we are score-wise, the scores in and of themselves are not negatively impacting the teacher evaluation, and they're not negatively impacting our funding or our ability to gain, you know, more money. It's just, you know, comparing ourselves to other districts in Burress County, and as you said, our own pride, you know, throughout the state. I mean, that's really, you know, at this point.
Thank you.
Yep.
Sure. Doctor, I have a question and a quick comment. One of the questions I have is about goals and the fact that we do have some score areas that I'm assuming we really need to work on. Is there any benefit to establishing some benchmarks or some, some maybe expectation in terms of performance as, as a, as something to shoot for, as a motivational tool, as a way to kind of try to move this forward to kind of reemphasize the importance of it? Or is that, is that, do you get a sense, you know, as administrative team, that that would be counted on doing that?
I mean, I think, you know, I know that Dr. Phillips meets with the principals, you know, throughout the year to kind of talk about their goals and their focus areas for the year. I mean, I think, you know, through a collaborative conversation, I mean, I think every single principal to a building, you know, would be very open to saying, you know, looking at my data, you know, I'd like to set, you know, this as a goal and, you know, work, you know, work towards it, because, you know, the principals have a significant amount of pride in, you know, in how their scores look. And, and that honestly, that was, that was one of the hardest things when we looked And, and that honestly, that was, that was one of the hardest things when we looked at this data when it came in over the summer was, you know, the principals were upset with themselves. They felt like they had, you know, you know, kind of, you know, let, let people down. And, you know, they're, they're working as hard as anybody else is. And so, yeah, I mean, I think, I think there's an opportunity, you know, through that, you know, through those evaluations that Dr. Phillips does and those meetings with the principals to, you know, weave that in. Yeah, and I think, obviously, if something gets written, it's more, it's more active at that.
Yeah, I mean, I think sometimes you can achieve, you know, it gives you a, you know, a road to achieve, you know, and a blueprint or plan to where you want to go. So, and, and I'm not seeing it as a tool to be used against them.
Sure, sure.
You know, I'm looking at it as more of a way to kind of inspire people to learn if, if you consider it.
Oh, and I think we need to understand too, this is the first time we've looked at data. It informed us. And we found work that Rose and Julie did. We had lots of studies in the wide sports and video. And we, you know, we did articulation and found out we were not covering certain curriculum or certain areas that were on the test. So I think this year, we are going to see a jump. I think we are going to see an improvement just from the fact that we did that work. There's instructional boundaries now that the teachers are using. We're focusing on looking at assessments and looking at information to move us forward. Absolutely.
Yeah, that was the comment that I was going to make was that what I really like is that my attendance for the committee meetings, I can see a direct relationship between some of the patterns that we're seeing here and the P D work that you're doing. And I think the enhancements that you made in the various, in the curricular areas, particularly in math, you know, where we, where I think we have the most, most growth potential.
Well, and I would just say as a closing comment that after the, after the November curriculum committee meeting, we'll have the P D S data that'll be out from the state at that point in time. That's the growth data that shows how much students have grown beginning of the year to the end. That's something that I'll share at that November meeting as well. So if those of you that would like to attend, you know, that meeting, we'll be able to dive into that. I would have added to see that, but it's not out yet.
Well, for my experience with the P S S A statistics are, as you just said, you get, you get the data in late summer or late summer, you know, for the state. And so now these kids are going on, like, they take the third grade and they, you took this, now they're going on to fourth grade. But I, I don't think that, you know, you have a general idea of, you know, where things are missing, you know, because the score might be low. However, do you really get to know which particular students are missing those things? I mean, do you get, you know, do you get a name or you just get a score?
We do, we do now that we're using the STAR assessments, you know, pervasively throughout the district because we give that as a benchmark in September and the data's instant. And the STAR assessments are somewhere between a point six and point eight correlation, you know, with, with P S S A. So, you know, while it's not completely a perfect comparison, we can look at a child's benchmarks, you know, STAR score. And if somebody takes a STAR reading assessment and they're, you know, below grade level on benchmark, then, you know, it's a pretty safe bet that when their P S S A score comes in, it's probably going to be basic or below basic. And, and so, you know, teachers have that data now at the beginning of the year. STAR math as well. We didn't necessarily, we weren't necessarily doing it that way previously, but this year we're giving it once a quarter. So, you know, we'll have the benefit of that data. And, you know, we'll know more in terms of summer regression because we can look at that final score in May and then test those same kids the following year when they come back in the fall and see, you know, that, you know, look at that piece too.
So is there any way that the state can, you know, get these scores to us sooner than what they do? I mean, I think that's one of the problems, not-
I'd love it. I would love it. I mean, they keep saying they're going to get into us earlier, but they've been saying that for a number of years, so I do.
Are you crying?
I wish I had silver bullet in my pocket.
Okay. All right, I'm going to talk to, I'm going to talk to Jerry. I'm taking over the job of Oklahoma. Well, I only had one question for you, so, you know, I don't know. So please do not say that was my fault.
Oh, exactly. They're just warming up.
Okay, we're going to move on in the agenda. The next area or minutes that we're going to be approving for next week. We've got special board voting minutes from September 11th. We've got board workshop minutes from the 11th and then board voting minutes from the 18th. In terms of policies, we've got about six or seven policies that are up for second reading. These are policies that we've had, already had a month in a workshop to discuss and are in their final preparation for approval next week. Some internal contracts, board resolutions, assignment transfer, suspension of furloughs, performance assessment, six, seven, sixty-sixth amendment, evaluation of employees, physical exams. First reading, and that's coming up next week. First reading has several new policies that will be taken a look at. The H I V infection policy, this particular policy, P S D A has made some changes. There's a lot of changes to it. They've altered the content, copy and language, deleted some certain definitions. And, you know, kind of brought up to current code. Like, everyone's had a chance to see it, you know, a few years ago. In policy three seventeen, conduct disciplinary procedures. You know, P S D A added language on the conduct. These are for school employees. Updating listing prohibited activities, updated arrest and conviction reporting requirements by law. And deleted certain disciplinary procedures as they deem to be better suited in administrative regulation. Educated misconduct, sedentary misconduct, penalties for tardiness. I think this is a, another basic kind of revision, moved some of the language around, kind of incorporated for different categories of employees. Remember that when we're making these revisions to these policies, we're incorporating all three categories of employees. Where in the past we had three different group areas of our, of our policy manual that affected professional employees, administrative employees, and support staff. Now everything is being incorporated into one single policy within the manual. So that was some of the, those are some of the modifications that were made here. Some of the language in this particular policy was outdated. It was last updated in two thousand and three. So a lot of it has been updated to reflect current practice. Outside activities, first reading, again, deleting some language specifying associated with other, for others with economic, religious, or cultural personal reasons. The language was supposed to be unnecessary and outdated. And again, modifying it to reflect the three categories of employment. The freedom of speech. Days of minor content updates. Deleted some language on comments being used representative of the district. Stating expression represents personal views. Language is already more generally addressed in the policy. So again, just some, just some touch-ups to that policy, nothing major. Getting into the next few areas, these are deletions of policies. And when you look at policy under the perplexed universal precautions, policy is viewed as procedural. And we know procedural policies shouldn't be due to administrative regulations. They've done, and made that recommendation, this deletion. Under two thousand and thirteen, they, again, deleting the policy as it would be more appropriately addressed than in other policies which we've already approved, policy number twenty-seven. The veterans diploma requirements. That policy is being deleted because it's being moved to policy two seventeen, so where it appears to be corresponding better with the current policy alignment. Substance abuse, near scholastic athletics, two seventeen point one is being deleted as well. Policy was viewed as procedural. Again, will be incorporated into administrative regulations. And then policy three sixteen, non-tangible employees. Another one scheduled for deletion because it's viewed as optional and has been determined not to be of that value to the line of- So those are, those are some new wrinkles that we have. We're actually deleting some policies that have been deemed as unnecessary. These will not require, these deletions will not require the two, the two vote process. There won't be a first and second reading on the deletions. It'll simply be a one vote, you know, process this, this next Tuesday. So if anyone has any concerns about those policies in the meantime, please communicate that to Don Napoli in administration building and our policy committee will take a look at that and, and reserve attorneys and make any additional modifications if we need to. Any questions on policies?
First question, I'm looking for a 308. For the rights and patient period education sixty days, is that standard practice in education? Does this understand as practice? This is 308. So this is a policy that we're, was for second grade. Specifically, we have item number one under authority as the third one. So I'm sure, what was the question?
I just wonder why it's sixty days. It seems like-
Is there, is there, is there a hyperlink?
No.
No, he's saying that he can hold, he can buy, he can hold people for sixty days.
That's not credible.
That's, that's always been that. Is that for all employees or just-
That may be code.
Professional.
There is, there is a hyperlink next to that. It looks like-
I was just asking about standard practice.
Well, that is the limit we can hold someone to. For our purposes, we will tell someone that we will hold you for the sixty days, that we can move you on quicker if we get somebody else in place. We try to do that as quickly as possible. But there are districts that they stick strict, they stick strictly to sixty days, no questions asked. So we hire you from another district that holds you for sixty days, that's their policy.
Next question's I had regarding policy three fourteen, the physical examination second reading. In that, I'm wondering, is this currently a practice that we allow? Under our, this is required for employees. There's various costs to examination.
Typically, it's through the-
Same point. I mean, well, the opportunity.
It's, oh, we've offered them, we've offered them, they're not employed yet.
No, we've, that's what we've given them at all for employment based upon the result of physical examination. But then we're basically asking them to pay for the proper award.
And they also pay for appearances too?
I have a lot of issues around a lot of things. The one is I'm asking right now is why would we ask a new employee to pair their plus to employment based on-
I think all districts do that.
I may have asked you about all districts. I may have asked you.
I can do it because it's the norm.
And therefore we have to follow the-
We don't have to. We don't have to.
Question that is, can, through the physical examination, in a discriminatory practice, when we find out they may have a pre-existing condition, we think that might bother our, our health insurance? Are we going to look at that and say, well, maybe, maybe not? I'm just wondering how this whole physical examination works out because that's more important.
If the job description relates, you may have to lift two to five pounds. If you can't do that through physical examination, then I guess that would be a reference that we would look at. But typically, physical exam is a general exam and you're fit to complete whatever job you need on there. And I don't believe anybody is going to.
I'm just wondering.
Use it against anyone for its higher purposes. It's not an evaluative drop. If you don't have this, we're not going to hire you.
Plus the requirement, it's acid, a T B test, checking in population, you know, that's very important.
I think if you look at the purpose of it, it also does, that's exactly what you're saying, is to protect the health of students and staff from the transmission of community diseases as part of it. And also the value of the fitness of the individual.
Well, it works against, it's actually comparison laws. I, I just have an issue anytime I ask an employee to pair their plus to come work somewhere. No employer I have ever dealt with has asked me to pay for anything, come work for me.
Well, I would imagine you can pay for your college degree.
Actually, I got my employer to pay for something.
Well, that's, that's, I don't think we're going to pay for it.
Believe it or not, nobody has really made an issue out of paying your plus to that. And nobody has, since I've-
Because they don't know either.
Since I've been on board, nobody has raised any issues with paying you honest.
Well, if we, if we wanted to look at taking on the expense for that, what would be the process? I'm sure Anne would probably want to give us some type of report about what the expected cost of that would be. Would that be an amendment in this policy? Is that something that needs to be associated with the contract?
It says simply, if you offer a player, you're required to be able to, so they've already offered a player the opportunity to work here. Then they say, by the way, we're also have to pay to get this exam. And we told you you could have a job. It's just a little backwards to me.
Well, most people get-
It's not like a certification. It's not like a license. It's not like a degree. This is going to work for specific employers. You have to have something good to pay for it.
Well, most people get a, they're really physical in work. Well, they should. They should. Maybe you know, but I do. I get twice a year.
That's part of your job requirement.
That's not part of my job. I would-
It's a personal choice. It's not something you require or require to be.
Well, when I, when I was mine, I had to get a physical, yes.
I'm just saying, I haven't had a physical.
Now that's years ago, but I'm tired by what.
I've never had a physical.
No?
And I'm like, well, we have drugs for thirty years, so I must be somewhere in less than three.
So I told you, we, we, we're looking to put, ask Anne to do some analysis on the baby leaves. And what we-
I mean, I look, I look at this as significant.
Why are you making such a big-
Because I think it's an item. I think Jerry has raised it.
When I agree with him, you better look for the sun to set to eat.
Because you work in the U D S.
You're the one that worries about the taxes.
Somebody said, Jerry, don't hear. So for this, Anne, could you kind of prepare an idea of the cost for us? And then could you get maybe some feedback about how we can go about doing this if we wanted to? Because I'm not sure if this requires an adjustment to, or an amendment to the policy here. I think this may be something that we have to pursue through other means. I could be wrong about that, but I guess that's kind of what we're looking at at this point, is how we should go about doing that.
Or maybe the same idea is in C D A or something.
Yeah.
I would have to ask how.
I mean, the other, I mean, I know the school code says that, you know, the examination could be conducted, you know, well, not only by a physician, but it could be done by a medical examiner of the school. So it could be a district's employee, medical examiner. It could include certified registered nurse practitioner, C R N, or physician, physician's assistant. So it really, you know, there are some, there could be some options. You know, if you wanted to try to minimize, let's say, the impact of the cost on the, on the vision. But it's, I mean, it's, as long as I've been in education, it's always been sort of the standard that these players responsible for the cost. It's not required.
And you had said there's not, if people don't complain about doing that, having to get a job and miss, go and do it.
They don't know either.
Well, I, I think, I think even if that is the case, and it probably is, I mean, where I work, they would pay for a physical examination for any one of our employees that they required it from. But even if they didn't, I would have done it myself anyways. But I think on this point, you know, we're kind of asking somebody to- But I think on this point, you know, we're kind of asking somebody to pay for the privilege of working here after we've already given them a job. And I think that argument stands in my mind because I think it's important for us to be good to our employees and requiring them to pay something for us to be sure that they're the person we already chose. That doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me either. So I, I appreciate, I appreciate what you're saying, I really do. And I think it probably stands true, if you didn't do this, you probably wouldn't lose anybody from applying. But I think this is just part of treating our employees like they are our employees.
And we can, and we can compare nonprofits, which is what we are in education, to businesses, nonprofit businesses.
Well, I work for a government entity, so that, and that's what I'm.
Well, I'm just, I'm asking, you know, because we are nonprofit and we start looking at, we have to budget. You know, most, it's incentive, we always should raise taxes, so we have to look at.
No, I appreciate that.
Our budgets as well.
I appreciate that. But I, I think, you know, this is just part of the thing that we have to consider for how we want to treat our employees. And we're talking about some of the challenges that we're having in terms of employment in new, new teachers. And, you know, I think just trying to set a standard and saying that we're going to take care of our employees, no matter what the issue is. If we can, this is a good first step in my mind.
Now, the reason this, we talked about the reasons why this teacher shortage is less, less people going into education and less than anything to do with having to pay for your physical, there's other, lots of other factors.
So if I'm saying that, that's not what I meant. I'm saying we want to set a standard for, we're going to treat our employees the best we possibly can. And I think that this is part of that step. And if we want to attract teachers to come to Exeter versus, let's say, Southern Valley, that might be a little bit of a stand that up. Felicity Wilson, we want to make sure that we're holding that standard in any way that we can, and I think this is part of that.
Well, I think most people that are adults are having shorts, so what's.
I think that's naive to say that. Most people up to the age of twenty seven can stay on their parents' insurance now.
Well, then they can get there, they can get a, a, a thing from the doctor, a, a physical from the doctor. Well, they're, they're a parent's insurance. You just said it.
It's not free.
They're paying the same amount of price that, when you go, when you go and get, you know, and I pay my physical money.
It's a principal.
Oh, no, it's a principal, well, everybody's trying to save money here, but then, you know, then when we try to save money.
I never tried to save money on that.
Well, I, you know, I never heard you bring this up, you know, in the seven years I've been on the board.
I brought other things along the way that I thought we should pay for along the way.
Well, I, I don't.
I don't think this is the first time I've insinuated the fact that L T P I asks people to do things for us, then we're all paid.
They have insurance.
I think what you're saying is too, I mean, if they have insurance that pays for it, that's fine. But if they, whatever their outstanding cost would be.
Yeah, if they have, if they have an adult, well, forty dollars or fifty dollars, we cover the adult.
That's what you're saying.
No, I think if they want to drive, you know, they can go to the doctor and get.
They have a forty dollar document, you should be very happy.
You need a better healthcare plan.
No, I think you meant, I think you meant a copay.
Yes, I think.
Whatever, you know.
Okay, so we can move on. I think what we're saying is that, Anne, is there any way to tick down a gap or should we be on this? And we're going to find out what, how the cost might be. Anything else that we can?
Well, again, I think probably the easiest way to put a number on it is to assume that we would require them to go to the facility where we send our drivers on an annual basis for their physical. You know, look at our hiring or turnover rate and slap a number on it. I mean, you can, you know, there's so many variables. Okay, somebody goes to this doctor, charges a hundred dollars, somebody goes here. I wouldn't be able to project that, I would have to use some big data.
Anne, so how many people do we hire every year? I'm sorry, Dr. George.
Go ahead.
How many people do we hire every year? New hires?
Oh.
One, thirty?
Not worth, I'd say, more than that.
Yeah, fifty.
Fifty times a hundred bucks is five for me.
Well, I got my doctor, it's twenty, two hundred. A physical. For our basic.
But Anne, you're saying they would go, they would have to go to our recommended position? And we, we know the standard rates for that, correct?
We do, I don't know off the top of my head. But then it could be more because there's a TB test.
But you know, that TB test only cost me, when I was hiring, it only cost me, I think, like ten dollars, six or ten dollars. It was very, very cheap.
So if we were to set up a network, if they didn't want to go where we recommend them to go, well, we know the fees, then maybe they assume.
Summer's picture, you know, the network for that.
Right, okay.
They stay within the network and reduce it, if they don't stay within the network, they pay whatever the fee is.
What'd you say the other day? Regarding reducing that.
I think, you know.
That's what I was talking about, yeah.
In fact, that's sort of quasi-way of saying, look, in one way, the people managing their costs are there, they're limiting their network of physicians places, so they get preferred pricing, but you have to stay within that network. So for instance, if we wanted to, you know, you could, you could pick preferred providers for the district. And if we wanted to waive the fees for new hires, they'd have to use those preferred providers. But if they wanted to go outside the system, then we could make that what it is now, which is they pay cash.
Yeah, when they're on the line.
And that's an option, I'm not, I'm just.
It's not a bad idea. Well, we should at least get some idea of what we might incur at this cost. Okay, any further discussions on policies? Yes?
Number three nineteen, in second paragraph under that thought. Therefore, when non-school activities directly impact upon an employee's effectiveness within the school district, the board reserves the right to evaluate the effect, subject to these, on the individual's completion responsibility and assignments. What are we talking about? Because it seems really broad, like, it, it feels like a punishing point.
You can interpret it. On one hand, you may be talking about the use of illicit subs. On the other hand, maybe they had a motorcycle accident and acted stupid.
No, I, you're talking about a point, right? You're talking about a, a second form of employment.
Yes.
So let's say that somebody's working, they're, they're teaching from, you know, seven to four each day, and then they have another job from ten to, ten to five in the morning, and they come in and work in a bit. And, and there's an impact on, so, on their performance. So that's my interpretation.
And three twenty. Number two, refrain from making public statements about the district known to be false or made without regard for truth or accuracy. Again, you know, you could get into a, you get into a thing where a teacher has an opinion. And they say something and get somebody's panties in. And now they're in trouble for an opinion.
If they present themselves as an employee at the district and that opinion reflects upon the district, would we discuss that? I think examples that we've done in the past where teachers or staff have presented themselves on social media as an employee at the district and made some disparaging remarks about the community. That would involve communication with that staff as an employee at the district.
Yeah, Anne, this, this relates to, again, the school code, the section five ten. It just talks about how, you know, the board in a school district can adopt reasonable rules and regulations regarding management of its employees. And how they're engaged in their duties to the district as well as their conduct and department. During the time that they're under the supervision of the school, school district. But, I mean, it, it is, it is a little bit of, I mean, I can see what you're saying. That's a, that's a policy that if taken, maybe if you go further out in context or further, let's say, if it's somebody's right to, to first amendment.
Right.
You know, to be able to speak freely and openly, you know, particularly during their free time. But I, I think too, if I'm an employee and I'm, let's say, I, I have access to privileged information regarding the school district, and I speak openly and in derogatory fashion about the school district, I think I can ask them to influence as well. So I, I think implement reasonably, which I think we do. And this is a policy that really has changed substantially, this is the only thing. You know, I, I see it as a reasonable policy, but I, I can see how you have to exercise and restrain it to somebody to make sure you're not studying folks' rights and speech. So that's a good point, good point. Thanks for bringing that up. Any other, any other comments or discussions about any other policies we have for next Tuesday? Okay, we're going to move on to business functions. That's Mr. Yoll.
And stuff there. We're going to be voting on assessment appeals, a new software contract, security improvements to the high school, and property tax refunds and budget transfers.
Excuse me, one more that I add is when I got here, so I forgot from the day, the Exeter Community Education Foundation fundraiser, the brick project.
Right, and the brick then.
Could you, can, can you explain that just a little bit in terms of what the brick, the brick thing is? By the time, did any, any less or?
Hi. We met with the facilities committee last night to discuss a brick project fundraiser that we have. I've included information for the board members that are interested with Jim Brady. What we're trying to do is essentially a fundraising project underneath the eagle statue in the form of name bricks. We met with the facilities committee and everybody was all on board. Questions, comments?
Can you say brick project, let me just describe that a little bit.
Sure, sure. So we are thinking of selling the name bricks for about a hundred and twenty-five dollars a piece. We've talked about doing some benches around the eagle statue as, excuse me, as well. We are essentially, if everything runs according to pattern, the brick project would start sales by Christmas and would be completed by March. The install would be around July, I believe is what we had said last night. So we can, so as to not disturb the students when they're coming into, into the building for school. If all runs according, this could be potentially netting us about sixteen thousand dollars, so we're excited.
So the action that the board's going to take next week would be essentially to, to endorse the project.
Correct.
And to, and approve the use of that particular location for the project installation.
Correct.
Right around the eagle statue in front of the high school.
And we just had, do you endorse the district to support the program? Because there are some things we're going to do with students and things like that as well.
Correct.
But this will be a zero cost, I'm assuming, there's no cost to it.
Absolutely, none whatsoever. And then last night we talked about looking at the drainage issue, so that still will be re-approached with the landscape. So that was the one contingent issue.
And the installation will be done by a third party? I can give a contract.
Correct, River View, yes. So that was, was our plan with the whole project, so. And this will be a project that's split between the alumni association and the education foundation, so it's not directly coming to one organization, it's going to be split between the two.
And I think one of the things that was highlighted was, you know, probably great to make this well-known to our families of our graduated, graduated class.
Correct.
So it would be a great way to immortalize their attendance here.
Correct.
In the district, so with their name on the brick and their, and their graduations.
Correct. And it's, it's a, it's a big project. It's something that we're going to do in phases. And that was, was looking at the area, I think what we accounted for was maybe about a thousand bricks in total. We're hoping, with all estimates according to my spreadsheet, was selling two hundred and fifty bricks and then phasing that in on a yearly basis. So you can honor graduates as they're coming through, you can honor the memorial bricks for anyone that has passed away. You can honor retirees, you can, you know, honor the good work of a school board member, et cetera, so. So, any questions, any concerns? I have the transcription gave to Jen, so if you have any.
I think what are most exciting about this project is the fact that the E C T F, Alumni Association are working together.
I agree, I agree. I agree.
Credit to you.
That was helpful last night for him to hear, for the Alumni Association to hear that about the prices, so I appreciate you saying that. I probably shouldn't have stepped up when I quickly said I agree, because I was trying to be cognizant of, of the Alumni Association's concern to keep the cost down. But I do completely agree. So we, as you will see, the, we updated the price a little bit today, and that's reflective of what's, and I think we were saying that we'd net about ten. We increased the price and looking at it would be about sixteen that we would net, so it would be a nice project.
Thanks for that, thanks. Any other questions about business, any of the business?
I just have a question about the Transfinder software contract. We currently have a software package we're using, and is this going to replace that?
This will, we did not renew our license in seventeen eighteen because we weren't having success before implementation, and that was version three. With, and we were considering moving to a new one. And with the hire of Ben Bernhard as assistant supervisor transportation, has his experience with Transfinder. We, you know, had a Webex with the, the staff at Transfinder and with technology, Ben and Rick. And their mapping is more sophisticated and it's just more accurate in identifying parcels. So we did not pay anything in seventeen eighteen. Of course, when you go to a new software package, that first year, there is a higher licensing fee. And then coming years thereafter, it's a different. So Ben has experience, I mean, they'll get the down one.
And the idea is as soon as we get the software to implement all of that?
Correct, you will need a balance that breaks down.
And, and the initial cost come with training or?
It comes with six months training. Right, but.
So they all train?
We all get.
Yeah.
I have a thing to start about, I saw three fat students on the, the top there. This person is then exempt by seven thousand nine hundred and twenty-four dollars and twenty-one cents. And none of this from the department, the military, the deputy affairs.
By law?
By law. But what I want to say, is this Pennsylvania law or is this a?
Each state has their own parameters, their own laws regarding eligibility. And Pennsylvania, you know, veteran is declared disabled.
I understand that. But you know, when I think of the state passes a law, and then once again, this is an unstandardized, I mean, mandate that the state has passed. For, for, I mean, why should the taxpayers of Exeter be charged or get seven thousand plus more dollars less because the state has that law? Why, why don't they fund that themselves? And I, I can see that being funded by, from the state, they pass the law. But this is another unfunded mandate.
It was sent into the state that.
And this is the first time we've, you know, was this type of program. And I don't think that this is something we want to shy away from, or thanking an individual and supporting them now that they're not able to do something because they were able to put themselves out there when we worked there. I think you may think you should thank that individual instead of them.
Well, I don't think she's, I don't think she's begrudging.
She's sorry, yeah, yeah, thank you.
No, no, I, I don't think you're begrudging the individual, you're just.
You're just commenting that the state has a mandate that they impose on the district. And it's unfair to the district because we're not getting the compensation that we can do normally.
Right, that's exactly where.
It's reasonable concern, and you should bring it up to your legislature.
And I'm going to talk to my legislators about this, because this is absolutely ridiculous. Nobody in this, in this county, I mean, in this district, sent anybody to the service or sent anybody that they got hurt in. I mean, I, I certainly understand the people getting hurt and I, I, you know, but I don't think that the, an individual district should have to pay that price. I mean, after all, they can afford a seven, they can afford a, a, a building, I mean, a, a home that's almost, you know, almost eight thousand, eight thousand dollars in taxes, that's a pretty nice home.
And for it's a newer home with higher taxes.
Pardon me?
For it's a newer home with higher taxes versus an older.
We don't report this to the state.
But I just think it's more on the, the person's time, point of view.
That wasn't in my world of paying taxes.
I believe in paying my fair share of taxes.
The sun sits in the west again.
That's why it's the east side of the.
I, I, I won't vote against this. I won't.
I think we should just be clear. And I think Pat was saying this, and I think Jim was saying this, that we definitely thank these guys for their service.
I definitely do.
And they have paid serious sacrifices. And I think we are.
Well, I understand that, but I don't think.
I, no, I think we are grateful.
Yeah. I mean, I, I, anybody that served me gets hurt, I, I don't stay alive or, you know, and make it, make it compensation. But when I say this, I don't think schools or teachers have to pay, pay for less taxes.
Okay, we'll move on. Thank you. Any further comments? One to the personnel committee. So we'll be dealing with a number of issues, personnel committee, resignations, appointments, change of status, leave of absence, course requests, certified school nurse position, which I don't see there. Is there anything else to say about the certified school nurse position that's?
Funny, in that it's.
It's an ongoing situation. That's an ongoing issue. Uh, for the comments there, if you don't need one, certain functions.
Well, I just want to say something. On this page here, I think it's February, February.
Who's page are you on?
Thirteen, thirteen. It says something like February one four four, twenty nineteen. I think it's the one.
Which one?
Down here.
Which one is seven?
Down there, seven.
Wanting part-time bus drivers?
No.
Leave of absence.
Leave of absence.
Oh, okay, I see that. Okay. Now, what are you saying, Ben?
Well, it says through February one four four, twenty nineteen. I think it's February sixteen.
I'm sorry. It could have been more recent.
Yeah.
He's wrong on ours, but it's.
Oh, yeah. You have to be. That's the strike. We may proceed.
Um, this is for the community on field trips that occur within sixteen hours. Building on field trips within sixteen hours, as well as community events at some university and, and the Minnesota German and Richard King care college.
Next, the standard of our agenda, these are the items that we're going to be discussing next, or actually voting on next Tuesday back in the district administration. I just want to add really quick. I know we have a high school group here and we've been going through some discussions today about the homecoming parade. Due to the weather, we'll let you know tomorrow morning. I'll get as much information out of our social media as well, when and if we will have the parade on Thursday or Thursday. It's a major, the hurricane is coming up on Thursday. It's all day thunderstorms. But we will let you know as soon as we can what modifications are going to be done for the parade.
So when, if the parade went on, what time would we have to be down to five o'clock?
If the parade went on on Thursday?
Yeah.
It's not going to be going on Thursday.
Or Friday.
Well, that, that's going to be part of the process. We'll have to get out tomorrow morning to everyone. We're still in discussion. Check your radio. Are we checking you? Right now, we've, we've canceled it for Thursday. I can say that much. The weather report is not, is not conducive to having the parade. We're looking at doing something on Friday, and also we can say that at this point it's clear now. Did we get confirmation?
Yeah, we did talk with the next week's department. The roads that we are using on a modified parade route are all part of the district property. So we don't need to worry about that. And the only thing is, is that they don't have any fire police available to us on Friday due to another engagement that they have. So they are going to get us barricades that we can put at the appropriate places, but they're recommending that we have somebody to command those spots. So we just need to work out some logistics of that, but we should be able to do it.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but what we're going to be doing is we'll be having the parade at five o'clock on Friday leaving from Reifton. It will be a reverse route. What it will do, we will leave Reifton and it will not go into the neighborhood. We will stay up Dunham Drive. We will hug the junior high, hug the top of the stadium. And then the floats will actually go between the school and the stadium, and that's where the kids will offload. Right now, we're staging at four o'clock. We'll get that out to everyone. The parade will leave at five. It's got about thirty-five right now floats and, and so it's going to be a timely parade. So we're, we're thinking six o'clock, six fifteen, we'll be offloading at the stadium. I know Mr. Bauer, Coach Bauer is about to upset. His team will not be in the parade. But they'll be on the field warming up as the parade goes through. Something that's going to be pretty exciting for the team to see all that happening. So we'll get all the information out to everybody tomorrow as much as we can, contacting not only all the social media we have, but the floats, the teams, everybody involved. And I'll have specifics to the board so that the board members wanted to participate. We'll have something out for you guys as well as tomorrow. Before we adjourn, are there any board members who would like to be heard at this time?